May I please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the beloved country which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Jerdy? Here. Fisher?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier?
Here.
Alt?
Here.
Lot?
Here.
Menard?
Here.
Gibba?
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. And just a reminder, the open forum is a maximum of fifteen minutes is allotted for the open forum. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Anna Olgaard-Brekin, and my address is two fifteen Sixth Avenue North. Is that all that I said?
Yep.
Okay. Um, city council members, first, I want to take the opportunity to thank you for being able to speak at this session and for you taking the time to listen to my concerns as a community member. As I said, my name is Anna Brekin, and I've lived in this community for over twelve years. My husband was born and raised here, and we are currently raising our four children in Kirkston, ages ten, eight, four, and two. I wanted to come here today and take a few minutes to address my concerns regarding the cuts to our youth recreation programs in our community. The Kirkston Community Pool is one of the only youth recreation facilities that can be utilized year-round and serves as an inclusive space for all of our children. The community pool not only provides swimming lessons, school parties and rewards, unstructured physical fitness opportunities, and a safe gathering space, but also provides a recreational outlet for many children in our community who do not fit the mold of other organized team sports and activities. I debated a number of things I could share with you regarding your recent decision to cut the community pool, and after careful consideration, I just wanted to share how deeply saddened and disheartened I am as a mom to young children living in this community. My children actively participate in pool activities. Most recently, we have participated in two summer swim lessons and have frequented open swimming when we are able. I want to share a personal story of how this will affect me. My husband is an active military member and travels daily to different locations in North Dakota for work. Sorry. While we have discussed the idea of moving out of Kirkston to ease the burden of his travel, we have chosen to, at least temporarily, stay in Kirkston as it gives our children stability and has always provided our family with constant support through countless trainings, mobilizations, and deployments. More importantly, we have always felt that our children have been given opportunity in this town to learn and grow into all-rounded people. And many times, as the sole physical provider for my kids, I have been able to allow them to take advantage of these opportunities that Kirkston has provided them. If the pool closes, as an example, our options for swimming lessons are drastically more expensive and cumbersome. Bringing four children to Grand Forks or another town multiple times for a thirty-minute swim lesson seems daunting and unrealistic to my family. Yet, my children deserve the right to learn how to swim. I understand you are faced with a very difficult decision through this budget cut, but it is my hope that we can continue to offer an invaluable swim option to our community. While I know it isn't a financial gain, I hope we can put worth in providing safe spaces for our children to learn, gain competence and confidence, enjoy health and wellness recreationally, and grow into successful adults who love and appreciate the community they were raised in. I urge you to reconsider these cuts to our youth programs. Please find other ways to alleviate our city's debt without penalizing our children. Finally, last night, I emailed the council a petition with over one thousand one hundred signatures on it in support of keeping the pool open. The support for this petition continues to grow. The majority of those signatures come from Kirkston and its residents and its surrounding communities. I hope that this petition shows that your constituents don't want to see this cut happen. We are coming together to ask you to reconsider this pool closure as we believe it will negatively affect our community for years to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Matt Rasu, Two Hundred Golf Terrace. I couldn't say it any better than that. The pool closing is devastating to our kids here in Kirkston. I'm sure there's other ways that we can fill the hole, but the fire department, you could say, is a hole too because it doesn't make money. The pool doesn't make money. The schools don't make money. So that, does that mean we should close them all down? I don't think so. We need to make this a priority for our community. Okay? Our kids deserve it. And I think it's, I kind of want to do a roll call because I've heard stories that this was brought up by the city administrator, who all voted for this.
So, the problem is, is the facility.
Say, hold it.
It's not a question answer, just let him talk.
Hold on, I can say what I want to say.
Not at the open forum, please.
Yes, I, yes, I can.
We'll have this further discussion under the budget discussion after the consult tonight.
Well, I mean, I don't know who voted for it. I'd like to know who voted for it. I, I don't think that's too much to ask for because I'm mad at the city council right now that the decision was made without public input beforehand. And my understanding is it wasn't made with knowledge of the Parks and Rec Department. In fact, I've been told that it was brought up, and it wasn't even on the agenda for the last meeting. Is that correct? Or can that be answered?
That's correct.
I have three special needs children in this community, and we are new to this community. We've lived here since 2021. And Kirkston is a wonderful town. I think we should stop gutting it. I've seen a lot of buildings downtown gutted, maybe not by the city council's lead, but enough is enough. The people who live here deserve better. The people in this town deserve a city council that involves the community. There shouldn't be any city council election without anyone running on their post. It's crazy to me. In 2022, there were several positions that had no opponents, and this year as well. That's crazy to me. I think the city needs to do better with having more citizens, being able to be a part of the city government, because when you folks make decisions up here, it affects a lot of people out there. So I would please ask that the city council, please reconsider closing the pool. I'm not going to stop coming to these meetings, and I'll bring it up every single time until you guys reverse your decision. My son, John Rasu, who's in third grade, said that on December twenty-seventh, he will cry all day. His life is already challenging enough being special needs. And I think you guys can do better. I believe in you. I believe in city government. But this is, I think, this is a learning opportunity for everyone. Do better. We deserve better. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Kathy Lassard. Up until about.
Address, please.
Uh, address, three oh two Crescent Avenue.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, up until a couple hours ago, I didn't even, wasn't really truly aware of the meeting, but have had concerns all along. My point is, I mean, we all get it, you know, money. The problem is, if we want our town to not continue to die off, we have to come up, we have to keep these things here. All we look like is a shell, and no one wants to come and live in a shell. And having no pool, when you have pools in just about every town around us, it makes us look so much less like we don't care what happens to us at all. And I wonder, those that bring this up, you know, it may not sit well with people, but when we have people that are part of our city government who don't live in town here, you have to question, how committed are you to making us a better place? And you lose these things, you lose the potential of people wanting to be in this town. That's all I have to say is that we need to, we need to really think, you know, do we want us just to go down the tube? Are we willing to find ways to keep these things, to make it look like we care about moving forward and not falling back? Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on.
Phone bridge.
Oh, excuse me. Is there anybody on the phone bridge, please?
Nobody on the phone bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Agent logged off.
Okay, we have one presentation tonight. It's regarding the financial condition presentation for the city of Kirkston. Jeff, please.
Can you, if you could please put it up on the screens?
And Jeff, can you go over to the mic so everybody can hear you too, too, as well? Thank you.
Yes, mayor and council, in terms of the audience, given that we are well into the budget season, I wanted to be very clear that, Kenan, next slide, please. When we got our audit in September, that audit was an absolute game changer with our forward-looking finances. I just want to go over, part of this is educational, part of this is just where we stand is what's happened since my arrival four months ago, and the rest is a picture of where the city is financially and what that means for us. Next slide. Our 2023 audit is an absolute game changer. When I arrived, we had multiple high-level open positions. We've gotten those filled with qualified applicants. We had an interim IT director. We now currently have a full-time IT director. We had no finance director. That position's been filled. The accountant position's been filled, and the HR coordinator's position has been filled. We've identified budgeting errors that have accumulated over time and throughout the budget to make significant impacts on the budget. As an example, in many accounts, utilities have been budgeted in twenty-two for a hundred and fifty-four thousand for one facility. In twenty-three, that facility would be budgeted for a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. Logic would dictate that in twenty-four, that facility should have been budgeted for about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, but instead, that budget line item is one forty. These, these errors, these entries are multiple and compounding. Back, back, please. We do have a work in process, and working with Lance, with Holly, the finance director, to improve our processes and further identify our processes. Next. One of the big questions, what are fund balances? One of the big things, everyone sees that big number. We have ten point seven million dollars in the bank, and what seems to be the problem? Why can't we keep funding these things? Well, the fund balance is broken into five different categories. The first is non-spendable. We've got about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in non-spendable. What that is, is when we pay at the beginning of the year for insurance premiums for the full year, we've paid that, it's an accounting mechanism, but we still have to keep that on the books until it's earned by the insurance company. The second is restricted. These are funds that are legally required by state statute to only be used for specific purposes. The best example that we have for that, out of our ten point seven million dollars, we have three point six million dollars in our Dyken Levy Fund. That is limited to only the Dyken Levy Fund. That's all we can spend that money for. Our total restricted funds is just over five million dollars. Half of the money that we have in the bank is restricted by state statute. We can only spend it on statutorily limited items. We do not have a choice to move that around. The third is committed. These are committed to a specific purpose by this body by a formal action. A good example of that, grant, grant match funds. We're going to talk in a minute about a couple of the grant match funds that we have. We are contractually obligated, once we commit this and we accept the grant, we are contractually obligated for those match funds. As an example, I've seen in social media, someone says, well, we've got the money for this Red River Valley Shows project. We just got a grant for that. Why can't we get a grant for the pool? That's a three point three million dollar project. Deed is giving us one point four, and the city's on the hook for one point eight million dollars. We also have our Ralesburg project. That's a six point six million dollar project, and the city's on the hook for three point three. We are looking at alternatives for federal grants to offset some of that three point three to free up some of those dollars. We are turning over every stone we can find. Carrie in Economic Development, who's by any account is very good at finding grant money. She is looking at every option and every opportunity we have to find money to offset some of these funds. The third is assigned. What that is, is just a little bit less formal. That's a budget, as an example, it's a budgeting process. If I know that in two years I have to buy a fire engine, I'm going to start setting aside money. If I know that every year I have to buy my police department, if I've got eighteen officers, I've got ten-year life, or chief, I'm sorry, five-year life expectancy on the vest, is that correct? So I've got eighteen police officers that I have to buy a new vest every five years. So that means every few years, I've got to buy them a new vest. I have to set that money aside. I have to set money aside for vehicles. We have to set money aside for the fire trucks. This city has never done that in a regular, structured manner in the past, ever. Every major expense has come straight from reserves. We've never had a plan to replenish our reserves. The third is unassigned. That's money that's just sitting there, unassigned. We can spend it on any legal purpose. Under generally accepted accounting practices, there's guidelines as to how much money we should keep in our unassigned balances. And what that is, is it's based on our revenue streams. The city of Minneapolis, for example, has multiple revenue streams, and they've got lots of money that comes in all throughout the year. Their unassigned fund balance guidelines may be thirty or thirty-five percent because they have multiple sources. We have two major sources, and they come in twice a year. That's LGA and the tax revenue. Because they come in twice a year, we look at half the year. We also have some other funds that come in. Our cash fund policy, which is guided by the Office of the State Auditor, that guideline is forty-five percent of our operating budget. Next slide, please. Actually, next slide. Now I'll go back. So what that means, imagine that unassigned fund balance, that forty-five percent, that's like having overdraft protection in your checking account. That's not money that you want to spend for operations. That's money that's there in case our revenues fall off. That's there in case we have an unexpected, unbudgeted, major expenditure. Doesn't take too long ago to remember we had COVID, and a lot of people weren't able to pay their taxes because they were laid off, they didn't have their jobs. City revenues in, throughout the country, cities' revenues started going down, and they had to start tapping into those reserves. Our current unassigned fund balance is one point one four million. If you look at our audit sheet on page, on page fourteen, it says three point two. And you follow that line over, there's a one point nine million dollar IOU from Streets. The Streets Department does not have a revenue stream. That's one of the accounting errors that we're trying to correct. There's no way for Streets to reimburse that fund. We have one point one four million. Our cash policy says that forty-five percent of our operating budget should be unassigned. That means that forty-five percent of the estimated 2025 budget, I need three point six million dollars to be in compliance with our cash policy. I'm two point four million dollars short, two point five million dollars short. If I actually look at the true operating budget, because Parks is a separate fund here in Kirkston, but in most cities, it's not. It should be part, and according to the state, there's nothing wrong with it being separate, but according to the state charter of accounts, Parks is normally a general fund account. If we were to re-merge that to general fund, that number goes to four point six that we need. Twenty twenty-five operating budget, including Parks, is about ten point three million dollars. Next slide. We currently have a one point two million dollar receivable from the Department of Economic Development. That's a grant for the Ag Innovation Campus infrastructure repairs that was done. I received an email from Deed about forty-five days ago identifying that the city had not closed that grant out. We were able to save that grant. We were on the verge of losing that one point two million dollars because it fell through administrative cracks. We were able to save that. Carrie in Economic Development and myself worked very hard last week getting everything together. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight that's going to finalize that grant. This will bring our unassigned balance to two point three million, which is still one point three million below the minimum threshold. We still have one point three million dollars to put into our account before we've repaid our overdraft protection. Next slide. Our fine details, this is off our 2023 audit, two hundred and twenty-two thousand in non-spendable, five point two million in restricted, one point six in committed, two point four in assigned, one point one in unassigned. Since this audit has happened, this body has committed one point six million to the Red River Shows grant, and additional three point three million to the Ralesburg plan, plan. These are the funds that we're trying to find other grants so that the city does not have to back out, because once you back out on a Deed grant, it's many years before they forgive you and let you apply again. That's a very black mark on the city. Next slide. This is a visual, this is a graph, 2021, Parks didn't do a whole lot, because if I remember correctly, we had COVID going on. So we gained a lot of money. Every other year on this graph, that's money coming out of our savings. Again, we have not had a regular, steady contribution to our reserve accounts embedded in our budget process. These years right here, four point five million dollars out of savings. Some of that's operating, some of that's major road projects. Tonight, we have an assessment hearing. Part of that money, the city will get back for special assessments on road projects, but that's payable over twenty years. So we're waiting twenty years to replenish some of that money. Next slide. What this means, that unassigned fund balance, again, can be thought of as an overdraft protection. That's not money that you're supposed to use on an everyday basis. That's money that we're supposed to have set aside for emergencies or short-term needs. It is not a good policy to use these funds, except very unusual circumstances. Our current policy, as I mentioned before, is in alignment with the Minnesota State Auditor's guidelines. Their guidelines are between thirty-five and fifty percent, based on our revenue streams, twice a year, forty-five percent. It would be unprudent for us to lower our cash reserve policy below forty-five percent based on our income streams. Just on a side humorous note, imagine a friend, if you knew that they were always into their overdraft protection every, every week, every payday, that's somebody that you would consider fiscally responsible. As a city, we want to be fiscally responsible. Next. What it means, a low fund balance makes it difficult to handle those unexpected expenses. A city's tax rates are very closely tied to our fund balances. Low balances cause unstable tax rates, because when our balance goes down, we have to raise our taxes unusual amounts to offset those. How many people have seen the last two years' tax bills? Guys, because for thirty years, we've never done, we've never looked to the future. Poor credit rating is what that possibly means. Credit rating agencies and investors generally view municipalities with low fund balances less favorably than they do with cities that have significant fund balances. To put that into real dollars, real cents, if you've ever applied for a mortgage, they want to see your bank statements. They want to know, if we give you this mortgage and you lose your job the month after, how many months do you have money to pay that mortgage while you look for another job? That's why they want to know that. Not a good policy to use these funds, again, except in very unusual circumstances. Next slide. How we got here? I'm going to preface this a little bit. I'm not talking about any of these individuals sitting up here individually, not one of them. I'm talking about the last thirty or forty years. Next slide. Our historic tax capacity, the council's seeing this one, if you'll notice, the focus, our tax levy is a nice, smooth line that goes all the way back to 2010. This is inflation. You'll notice that line's a little steeper. Not only have we not been putting money into reserves, we've not even been keeping up with inflation. Tax capacity, what that is, as an example, one percent of the value of a home worth less than five hundred thousand dollars is considered its tax capacity. The county aggregates all of our property, commercial is one point two five percent, things over a half million residential is one point two five percent, and the county aggregates all that, and they take out all the homestead exemptions, and they tell us what our annual tax capacity is. Last year, our tax capacity was five point one million. This year, our tax capacity is four point eight. It ran down, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. It went down, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. In the past, this goes back to two thousand and ten. You'll notice every time our tax capacity drops, the council had no rate, no choice but to raise the rate to cover that loss. Because it costs a certain amount to keep this city funded. The problem arises, you'll notice here in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, when the capacity went up, instead of using that, that's a good inflation because you'll notice this roughly measures inflation. If we keep our rates at an equitable level, relatively good, and we keep up with inflation, if we would have done that, we can weather the storms if we had adequate reserves and a stable budgeting policy. Tax capacity went up in twenty fifteen, went from three million to three point five. The council, at that point in time, lowered the tax rate. They were, they just kept the dollars. They wanted to keep everybody happy. I know that this council's talked about that in the past. So that, every time it goes down, they have to raise. It comes up, they stay flat. It's not keeping up with inflation. So how did that happen? What does that mean? Next slide. How we got here? One, we've had vacant key positions in this city. Our HR director's been vacant for some time. We just filled it in August. Our IT director, we had an interim director when I got here. He's done, he's done a fine job, but we've now replaced him. Joel. Because we have a very green staff, about half of my staff has been with the city for less than a year. So we have a lack of experience and training and that's both on staff and council because they've not had the guidance. They've not had someone that could provide that guidance to give them that best practices, to tell them to set that aside. This council's never been given the information that this audit tells us. That's not a disparagement term on anyone that was here prior to me. That's just a fact. I've looked through the audit books in the previous. They were not set up the way this audit was. This audit was probably the first audit that was done well in many years. And I would like to applaud this council for hiring the audit firm that did this audit. Because it's the first one that they did well in many years. Focus has always been, as far as I can look back thirty, forty years, keep tax rate low. I don't care what the main needs are. Let's keep the tax rates low. Let's keep that levy nice and even, three percent. In about four months that I've been here, I can't tell anyone how many times my department heads have told me and council members have told me that in the past, the council did not want to hear about what the needs of the city were. The council wanted to say, we're gonna put a two percent cap, we're gonna put a three percent cap, and we're gonna leave it at that and you're gonna make that budget work. What happens when you don't have enough money, but you know you've got to start fixing some things? That deferred maintenance starts adding up. When your roof goes bad and you don't fix it, what happens to that roof? Does it get any better? It gets worse. No strategic planning. We've never looked to the future. We've looked at this year. Spending without verification of fungibility. Again, I want to emphasize, I am not blaming any member of this council because they were not provided the information. The information wasn't available. The accounting in this, in our city right now, we've got Lance from CLA that has been working very hard. Better part of a year now, hasn't it Lance? With a team of accountants, trying to unravel the onions, trying to figure out where things are and what, what, where the money is and where the money isn't and how things got coded, and we're getting pretty close to the bottom of that rabbit hole. As an example, that Red River Valley Shows. We saw that ten million dollar balance. That was my first week here. I sat in that chair for the very first time and we approved that. We're looking at one point eight million dollar cost to the city. Can you, can you go back about four slides? Uh, couple more. There you go. How much money do we have? We're negative two point five million. But we've committed one point six five. And we're overdrawn by two point three million dollars. We're into our overdraft protection. Because we didn't know what we didn't know. Let's go back to where we were, please. Next slide, please. Guys, this is where we are. This is the condition that I was hired to try to help fix. Right now, our annual budget for twenty twenty-five for our, for our general fund, I need an extra three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars just to balance operating. Got four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in critical need infrastructure or capital needs that must be spent. Sum total, I need between six hundred and thirty and six hundred and ninety thousand dollars to balance the budget. And that's after I've already removed the expenses from the pool. If I put the pool back on, I need eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars to balance our budget. And I have not even begun to put a single penny back into any of those reserves. Not a penny. I've got another million dollars in infrastructure needs, in equipment needs that the city needs to have, that we're having to kick the can a little further down the road. Because it is impossible for us to raise the money to do everything that we need to do. Absolutely impossible. Guys, everyone?
Can you just clarify something? When you say these dollar amounts, are you referring to us at our cap for tax levy?
No, our ca, our preliminary tax levy is four point five million. I'm currently operating out of four point one seven. I have three hundred thousand extra, but that would mean a twenty-six point five percent increase.
Okay. I just, I just want to clarify so everybody knows at the end of the day, what we're talking about here.
I have an additional roughly three hundred and twenty to three hundred and fifty thousand that we can legally levy according to our preliminary. But that would put us exactly at the level that everyone saw in their preliminary tax levies and it would still not cover the costs that we have. Guys, isn't every one of these council members working very hard, trying to work this out? I work every day with Holly and every day with Lance, be it remotely or in person and with my department heads. We're trying every single way to Sunday to find a way out of this mess. This mess did not get happen overnight. This mess happened over thirty or forty years. It's not gonna fix overnight.
I'd, I'd also like to clarify that this council has requested utilizing LERS, which part of that is creating a ten-year strategy for finances and looking at, and that's why we did the assessments for all the buildings in our town. We've done all these things, these educated pieces in order for us to make these decisions and do this directive and be more strategic in our planning and our funding. And that had been kicked down the road quite a bit up until now. I would really like them to be on board in the next couple of weeks to have some more conversations about this budget and also about bonding capacity for some of these things because that was the initial conversation when we're talking about um, the rail spur and things of that nature, to see where that can assist us and help us in our budget overall. That's what they're there for, is to help us. We don't expect Jeff to be like the utmost knowing all about MFs and TFs and bonding and all those things, right? And so I think that, I think you guys should continue on with what you're doing and I think that LERS needs to get on board and help us see if there's other alternatives, whether that's bonding or like doing some like initial temporary bonding until we can like maybe find more funding. But I think, I'd like to look at this and explore this a little bit more deeper before we're making any hard decisions because that was a whole initial understanding of what we were supposed to be doing with LERS. Right? Was to be helping us find these avenues and revenues to, to be able to manage these things. I will say, our city needs to move forward. And a part of moving forward is developing our agricultural and industrial area. It's about creating more jobs. It's about creating more housing. It's about having childcare in our town on top of, of, of these amenities, right? So I just wanted to keep that in mind as we go forward, that these things might seem like one-off things, but they are strategic and us trying to create more industry in our town, which also then helps with the tech space and things of that nature. So things to consider and think about as we're going forward.
Bonding is an appropriate use for long-term capital investments. Bonding comes with a cost, with a cost. That cost, the bond, those bond payments generally will come out of either water sewer, their water and sewer lines or the general fund. If we bond to buy a fire truck, which we can do, but that bond payment then must come out of the general fund, again, part of the tax revenue. Yes, sir, you have a question?
You gotta come to the mic, please?
If the decision to close the Winter Shows building and buy that parcel was made before we knew this information, why don't we just cancel it? Some board owns that property. They can make their own decisions and the city can save its pool. That's one point eight million? Let's not do the project. There's plenty of lots for that credit union that they can build around Walmart. We don't need to spend that kind of money. That doesn't, there's plenty of spots, but that doesn't make any sense to me. I'm not a smart man.
Matt, I can kind of share a little bit with you about that and I think that he's already mentioned it a little bit. But we have committed this with DDE, which has provided one point, what was it? One point six million dollars towards that. Um, and if
So that's like a fifty-fifty match, right? Or a forty-five?
About that. It's a little bit more on our side. But there's, again, there's other grants and funding that we're looking at right now for that. But the thing is, is that we've already committed to that. They've committed to that. DDE is not going to work with us on future projects if we pull out of this. And that also predicates the, the rail spur as well. And so they can pull out of that as well. So I think there's a lot more to that than just, it's just as simply we're gonna take it away.
But maybe if they knew the context.
Well, and that, again, we're, we're working to try to find alternative sources.
I, I would say there, we're looking for alternative sources for a lot of things. And I, I wouldn't discount anything and everything. At this point, it's not that we're not looking for other revenues and other, and other ways of looking at things. Just know that. It's a hard decision.
Yes, and I joke a lot about the position of city manager, city administrator. One of the jokes that is unfortunately very true, and this is my personal belief, I get paid to make bad decisions. I get paid to make decisions that are very unpopular because they are elected officials. It is my job to bring forth potentialities and ideas that may not have occurred. But it is also my job to represent fairly and honestly, to the best of my knowledge and my abilities, the true condition of the city that I work for. There is a, and if, if I may ask for a little indulgence from the council, I've seen on social media that there's several, many that don't like that I don't live in Madison Lake, or I'm sorry, apologizing Crookston. Back to another city. Uh, that I don't live in Crookston right now. It is my intention to be in Crookston. At the timeframe when I was hired, I made a lot of phone calls. I got a list of about twenty-five or thirty people that had rental properties from the Bank Realty.
We, we gave out our names to two different people from the city.
Yeah.
Our numbers.
And I called
We did, unless my phone is out. We never got a call from you to even come and look at the property. Nice property and sold for hundred eighty-five thousand.
Well, I can't buy, I couldn't buy a property because I had a four hundred thousand dollar mortgage. And, yeah, I, I called many. I did not, I, I am going to freely admit, I did not call every single number that was there. I called many of those numbers. I looked at several, or virtually. But my goal is to move to Crookston. We have a great town here. And I don't want anyone to think that I think less of Crookston because currently right now I'm renting in another place. This is, this is my town. I work for this town and I will give everything that I have to make this a better place for us. But we are in a very difficult spot right now. We have a lot of expenses. Most of our budget is wages, contractually obligated items. The state requires us to have specific IT information technology capabilities to block people from taking over. I believe our budget's about two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year for what would be the municipal or city equivalent of McAfee on steroids. Joel, is that a decent analysis or is that not right? Joel's our new IT director. He started today. Fun day.
I'm imagining he probably hasn't looked at the budget that close to.
Probably not, but members, I just want to say we have a very difficult decision. We've got a lot of difficult decisions in front of us. And part of that is that we do need to use tax dollars in the most efficient way that we can. And we need to address all of our city functions. We've already, I've already spoken with my department heads. We've already gone over our budgets time and time again. And I've already kicked a million dollars in capital needs to the future. We're doing everything we can to keep your tax levels as low as we can. About a month, about a month ago, I did a presentation at one of our budget meetings for the council. And I compared them to that evil city right up the road. We're a lot more alike than we are different. They've got about eighteen percent more people than we do. They have an outdoor, they have an outdoor recreational pool, they do. They also have three sheets of ice and we have three sheets of ice. We have six, we have six full-time firefighters. They have seven. We have eighteen police officers. They have twenty-four. We have twenty-two parks with playgrounds. They have fifteen parks with twelve playgrounds. One of the differences between us and them, their tax capacity, primarily because of a flood in nineteen ninety-seven. They rebuilt a lot of old homes. Their tax capacity is nine point nine million dollars. Their tax capacity is double our tax capacity and they only have about eighteen percent more people. When you add that up, their tax, their tax levy last year, ours was sixty-eight percent of four, of five point one million. Theirs was seventy-five percent of just shy of ten million. They have a higher tax rate on a higher tax capacity. They also have one other thing that we don't have. They have an electric utility. That electric utility is responsible for a direct contribution injection of cash to the city, one point five million dollars a year. And they allocate wages and costs from departments for another five hundred thousand dollars a year. That electric utility pays them two million dollars a year over and above. So when you line up, we have virtually all of the amenities that they have. But we have less than half of the money that they have.
Can I just add like on that comment about the flood? These were those who spread those people came to for shelter. Crookston, the gyms, the churches and everything. So we helped save them. We don't give any credit for our money of doing such.
I understand that. I understand that. It's and that speaks and the fact that Crookston was willing to bring them in. And help them. That speaks volumes about our city. That speaks volumes about our city and our people. But the tough decision that we have is how do we get out of this mess that's forty years in the making? That's the decision that this body needs to come up with. Because we have to come out of a problem that's forty years in the making.
I don't mean to backtrack, but why where did that? Why did the city enter into that agreement on the winter shows if you knew we didn't have the money for it?
We didn't know at that time. We didn't know until we got the audit in September.
So.
We saw the balance.
And being done.
The audits were not being done as well as this one. C L A.
I was gonna say C L A.
Has done.
C L A has done, yeah.
C L A has done a lot of work cleaning up our finances, cleaning up our accounts and our management and our journal entries. Previous audits, many people look at audits and think that it's a line by line look over what the city is and what the city spends. That's not. They look at aggregates. They look at totals. They look at the funds. And they say, does this make sense? As an example, I believe one of the thresholds that they had for accounting significance. In our general fund, if I remember from the presentation two weeks ago, was about a hundred and some thousand dollars. If it was less than that, it was deemed insignificant. Because of the work that C L A has done over the past year. We have a much clearer picture now of where our accounts truly are. As far as concerned as considering where they were last year. Last year, we have audit notes. Those are the notes in the back of the audit where the auditor says. This is the level of confidence we have in the information we have. We have an audit note from about three years ago, three or four years ago. I'm not sure which audit my memory. I've looked at about twenty five of them over the last two weeks. We have an audit note. One of the notes actually says from the auditor. In accounting speak, Lance, please correct me if I'm wrong. In accounting speak, it says, we're providing our opinion on this audit based on the information we're told, but we can't necessarily verify all of it. Is that a correct statement?
Qualified opinion.
Qualified opinion. What you want is an unmodified opinion. In the past, we've had qualified opinions. That's where the auditor looks at all of our finances and says, well, you know what? Based on what you're telling me. Sounds like you got. That would be like me calling a mortgage company and saying, I got six point five million dollars in the bank. Can I buy a two hundred thousand dollar house? Sure thing. Done. They're taking my word for it. Do I have six point five million dollars in the bank? My bank counsel overdrawn.
So wasn't that five hundred thousand not appropriated? What did the council look at to say we had money to do this?
We've been looking at audits for ever since I've been on the council that have not been accurate.
Right.
So we've been asking and asking and asking for accurate audits. So finally, this council decided to hire Clifton Larson. Because I've been asking for the um undesignedated funds for years. And I haven't been able to get that number ever. Because I wanted to know when we're taxing our citizens, if if we're. I know auditors would like to hear this, but if we're overtaxing our citizens, if that money goes into the undesignedated funds, that's that's building a balance. Because I was thinking that if we could give that money back to the citizens and levy less the following year. That would be, I think that would be an appropriate action for the city to do. Now, come to find out, our our undesignedated funds that we have is way lower. Than I have ever been told in the past few years. So it's 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 been. We've had this turnover with our with our finance department for so long. And it and it's put us council in such a a tough position to to do the city's business for the future.
I have been on the council for six years now, and this is the first time that we've had this kind of information. To give into this.
And 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 then in the past and not to not to say anything on past councils. They would instead of hearing the budget or the the wants of the department heads first to see what the needs are and what we need to do. They set the they set the levy amount to say it's going to be this. So then, like like Jeff said earlier. The 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 department heads had no cop of no um. Other alternatives, just to cut everything they possibly could just to get through the year. And that's happened year after year after year.
Which is why we did the facilities assessment to actually see where we're at, to actually make more informed decisions going forward about the capital improvement. The difference between last year and this year is that we brought C L A in. We had the same auditors last year as that we had this year. But we actually had a more accurate picture this year of what the actual audit was. So that's the difference. Miller McDonald was our auditors last year as well. But we actually had a deeper understanding because of the clearing of the rectifying of a lot of the counts. That hadn't been balanced and hadn't been done the way they should have done. So there's several things that we're currently working on from this audit that still are in process. We also have made sure like the the chain of command is different and there's more checks and balances based on this. But there are still things that we're cleaning up and hoping to have done within the next couple of months.
So getting back to why a lot of people are here. Now, trust me, I was probably one of the last people, probably not, I don't know, but I did not want to close this pool. Something that was not on my agenda. The 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 problem is it's not just the pool is going to sit at this amount of money to run each year. Problem is that there's so much infrastructure damage to this pool. We don't know what's going to happen down the road. That's gonna that's gonna be a catastrophe amount to 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 um. It's gonna be out of reach for our city because right now it's out of reach. It's like six, just to keep the pool going right now. And I've done a lot of thought on this on my own. It's like. It's like six to eight levy points just to just to keep the pool. So if we if we if we cut the pool, we'd be saving about six to eight levy points. On on our levy increase this year. So I don't know how many of you guys were here last year at the tech truth and taxation meeting, but that meeting was not enjoyable for us to sit through. We had to sit through and, you know, even though we're trying to do what's best for the city. You know, we had to listen to everybody saying our taxes are too high. We don't offer a lot of stuff for the city. And it and it was it was tough to sit through. But, I mean, I ask any of you to to what what's what's the answer? I mean, do we just continue to hammerage money on on this one pool? And and I know everybody in here is passionate about it, but to be honest with you. Out of our whole population, a very currently a very small like twenty to thirty fifty, say fifty people. Are 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 continually to use that pool. So if you're if you're a business guy and I'm trying to put on my business hat when I'm here, is that something that's the best interest of the city to continue to do? That's that's where I'm coming at. I'm not for closing down amenities for the city. I am not. So I mean, I I I don't know what the, you know, I I I called Jeff here earlier last week. I'm like, listen, if there's an agency out there that wants to pull. Would we just give it to them? We gift it to them. They can have it. Anybody out there entertain the idea of of um just taking the pool and and running with it and trying to operate it? Is there, you know, a lot of you pool folks? Is there anybody you could reach out to?
Saying. This is this will be on the budget agenda.
Listen, you cut me off. That's already deal. I'm I'm talking to the constituents.
Budget agenda. We gotta keep moving.
Hold on, but so that's that's the point I was trying to make before. So I I listen, I feel with every one of you guys. I don't want to do it, but. Go ahead and you got your hand up.
Come to the podium, please.
I would just like to speak on the use, and I think this is a really important statement on the use is that. Um, our school district is over sixty five percent free. We used to um work for the school district and I used to be the one that processed all the applications. So I do know that. Um, and up until this last year, prior to that, the every um elementary student got two weeks at the pool. Um, with the previous pool director um to learn how to swim and um just from personal experience. Is that because of the um our low socioeconomic status of our students? Sometimes this was the only swim lesson that they would get and it would be given to them for free or for what the cost that. Um, I know that at some point the school district was paying something. And I think we do have to put worth into into that, into that. We live in um very close to lakes country. And now when we have students that don't have the opportunity to learn how to swim. Um, but they're given that in gym class for two weeks, um that that's very impactful, empowering. It builds competence in our children. And therefore can build confidence in them and and could be saving lives. So I understand that that use is not up where we would all love it to be. But I do think we have to put weight into the fact that we're bringing our our school children. We were up until last year bringing our school children to the pool. Um, my husband, as many of you know, was the previous director to the pool. And he would have stories upon stories to tell you about um some of our low income students who would thrive within those two weeks. And gain the ability to at least learn how to keep themselves from drowning. So I do. I understand and I do understand all the very difficult decisions you're making, but I do think we have to put weight in something like that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I also just verify the school board voted against putting money towards this pool, right? I just want to make sure that we also are very clear. On where the support's not coming from too. Um, so is that not true? Guess no?
We have not had. We have not had a vote.
Well, no, the school the school boards said we're not paying for the pool anymore. They 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 used to pay.
I have been told by the superintendent of schools that thirty thou- we do have a contract with the school. And at a few at a near, very near future date, it will be a different discussion with the council. Uh, because we do have a contract with the school through twenty twenty seven for thirty thousand dollars a year. I have been informed by the superintendent that that amount is not in their.
Their budget, correct? So I just want to also make sure that if you guys are going to be allowed, I also want you all to be allowed at the school board too, because. The financial support that we're getting as a community is not just the city. So also just keep that in mind as well.
I I don't want you guys to. I don't think anyone expects the council, you know, city council members or mayors or anyone to be perfect. That's impossible, you know. This the city has a black eye because it may, you know. Made a bad decision. And I think we should just own that black eye and not force the black eye onto our kids. So cancel the winter shows project. Cancel the rail spur. These are. There's count. There's a bunch of owners that own the winter shows building. They can. Come up with a business solution to renovate their own building. And if someone wants a rail spur, it shouldn't be coming out of our pocket. I I in my opinion. If we're in a financial dire strait, let's not cut services. Let's take the black guy with D E D E E D. And, you know, we can explain, hey, he is a city council made a bad decision, bad decision. I'm sure. They'll work with us. We can save the pool by doing that. We can renovate it. One point eight million dollars. You can put the pictures back up. I don't care. It's our pool. You know, let's pull a plug on those two projects. Okay, I mean, it's, I know it's easier said than done, but. This is Crookston. We can do it. I mean. I don't have much more to say, but. I know this is heated and I don't expect you guys to be perfect, but I think that let's take the black guy. Let's have you guys take the black guy and admit that you guys made a made an error. And that's fine. It happens. It happens in families. It happens in businesses. It happens everywhere. Take the black guy. Don't force it on our kids.
All right, thank you. We're gonna move on here. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove anything from tonight's agenda?
Your honor, under the regular agenda, if we could add item eight point zero six, a resolution regarding improving. Oh, seven. I'm sorry, sorry. Oh, seven for the proposal of the financial management plan from others.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Got Christie and I heard Tim. Discussion, hearing none. Let's have roll call, please.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? And I have a motion to approve tonight's. Got Tim and Don. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Okay, motion carries. We have a few public hearings. Ashley, please.
Yes, your honor. Item seven point zero one is a public hearing on project one zero zero one located on Houston Avenue. Hunter Street, South Ash Street. It's a local project by street reconstruction. This project has an estimated cost of six hundred and three thousand sixty three dollars. With a portion of the amount to be assessed for street improvements being a hundred and fifty one thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars. This recommended term on the assessment is for twenty years at six point five percent, your honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address council? If so, please come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item seven point zero two is a public hearing on project one zero zero two located on North Broadway, Sixth Avenue Northwest to Fisher Avenue. By Bituminous Mill and Overlay. It's a state aid project. This project has an estimated cost of three hundred and twenty four thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars. With a portion of the amount to be assessed for street improvements being four hun- or forty three thousand nine hundred and ninety one dollars. For the sidewalk, the amount is eight hun- or eighty nine thousand one hundred and forty six dollars, equaling a hundred and thirty three thousand one hundred and thirty eight dollars. The recommended term on this assessment is twenty years at six point five percent, your honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address council? Please come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item seven point zero three is a public hearing on project one zero zero three. It's located on Third Avenue Southwest, Old Trunk Highway seventy five to Bruce Street. It's a state aid project by Bituminous, Reclaim Million and Paving. This project has an estimated cost of two hundred and sixty four thousand four hundred and seven dollars with a portion of an amount to be assessed for street improvements. Equalling seventy nine thousand three hundred and twenty two dollars. The recommended term on this assessment is twenty years at six point five percent, your honor.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address council? Please come to the sto- podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item seven point zero four is a public hearing on assessments for unpaid water and sewer charges for current servicers. The amount for unpaid water and sewers charges is eight thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty four cents. The amount for mowing charges are two thousand six hundred and fifty four dollars and seven cents and miscellaneous charges and one thousand three hundred and seventy five. Each assessment is a one year term.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Does anyone wish to address council? Please come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing.
Item eight point zero one is a resolution approving the nonprofit organization request for twenty twenty five.
Okay, this is to the regular agenda.
Yes.
Do I have a resolution to approve this?
Your honor.
Or a motion, sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you. Don, is there a second?
I'll second it, your honor.
Clayton, discussion?
Mister Mayor, uh, there is, I believe, we sent out to the council in my administrative update. Uh, there is one item that was previously approved. Approved by council or moved forward by council for approval. That I've been notified by legal that may be problematic, given. State statutes and attorney general's opinions on appropriate uses of public funds. That I that item, I I just received documentation from Tanner approximately four forty five or so. So I did forward that. To the to the members of the council. Uh, there is an attorney general's opinion. Dated May twenty first nineteen forty eight, and this the what I had emailed to the council is a synopsis from the League of Minnesota Cities. Tanner is working on the getting the actual full opinion. However, it is in line with that opinion, supporting Boy Scouts and other private outdoor activity. Entity programs is not sta- does not have statutory. Entity programs is not, sta- does not have statutory authority. So that is the guidance that we have from legal.
So based on that, um, we're waiting to hear back from Tanner, is that correct?
Based on that, we are waiting for the final full AG opinion. Uh, the AG's office sent him the wrong opinion to book the first time that he had asked. And so they're, they're forwarding the next, we anticipate in the next few days, we should get that. However, currently, based on the information from the League of Minnesota Cities, it is the belief of legal. That this is not statutorily supported.
All right, should we table this until we get the opinion?
Uh, the funds are not scheduled to be dispersed until the next budget year, until the new budget year. There, I see no reason why we can't table the opinion or table until we have that opinion.
So then do we need to redo the, the motion and the second to make a motion to table it then?
Oh, withdraw my motion.
Clayton, did you want to withdraw your motion?
You're gonna withdraw, Clayton?
I make a, I make a motion to table this until.
Hold on for a second.
You're gonna withdraw your motion?
Yes.
Okay, Delane?
I make a motion to table this until we get the opinion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Wendy. Yep, do any rules?
So again, this is to table, um, a resolution approving the nonprofit organization request for twenty twenty-five.
And if I may, just for, for the public's knowledge, uh, tabling this resolution to date uncertain. Uh, from a procedure standpoint, it can be brought up at any point in the future without being on an agenda as information comes available.
Thank you. Okay, and roll call, please.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
We're tabling, yeah.
We're tabling, sorry. All right, uh.
Item eight point zero two is a resolution to approve the Small Cities Development Program Rehabilitation Loan for Local Income for Keep Realty LLC.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you. Clayton, is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Wendy. Discussion.
Uh, Mister Mayor, members of the council, th- this is part of the Small Cities Development Grant Loan that we have. Uh, that we are required to spend down prior to receiving the following year. Uh, this is a roof project on two apartment buildings at the end of North Main. It's an exterior grand roof. Uh, the, after this grant is awarded, the remaining balance is fifty thousand. We have an applicant in process that will be about forty-one thousand. So our. We are, we have high expectations that we will meet the goal of spending these state funds. Pardon me, uh, until the, prior to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
So by spinning this down means that we can then reapply for the IRP?
Yes, would, that means that we can reapply for the same, same small, small cities loan in the future and get funds for next year. That's already in process.
Okay.
Hey, further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item eight point zero three is a li- a resolution regarding a letter of support with respect to the Minnesota Department of Transportation, MINDOT. Active transportation planning assistance.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Tim. Second by Don, thank you. Discussion.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is a zero match, one of those rare zero matched active transportation grants to provide pathways in town. Uh, there is further, there is further information in the administration report under the EDA department that you were provided with the packet.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
So item eight point zero four is a resolution to approve the local government's special appropriation application for the Crexton Coldborne Property Development.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, your honor.
Thank you, Delane. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Christie. Discussion.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, this resolution is the final step to tie off, uh, the previously mentioned grant. Uh, for the ag innovation campus infrastructure work that has already been completed. There are two separate grants. One is in four hundred and some thousand, the other one's eight hundred. They total approximately one point two million. Uh, this resolution is the last step that we need to get to deed, to collect the funds to reimburse us from expenses from last year.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Claude?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item eight point zero five is a closed session to discuss the Crexton Firefighters Labor Negotiation. Our motion and a second will need to be closed the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Government Data Practice Act. Specifically, Minnesota State Statute thirteen D point zero three subdivision one B.
Okay, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second it. Tim and Don to close the meeting.
If I could have everybody in the council chambers go out into the hallway until this closed session is.
Six is a summary of the closed session.
Okay, Jeff, please.
Yes, during the closed session. We discussed, uh, discussion on a fire department union contract.
Workshop to order for, uh, Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
We had discussion on comparable departments.
We have, uh, one item, once again, budget discussion and guidance.
We discussed staffing levels on ISO impact, discussion of benefits and wage amounts. We discussed retention issues related to pay and benefits as is comparable to neighboring and comparables neighboring cities. We came to a consensus on terms for an offer.
Item eight point zero seven is a resolution regarding authorizing a contract with Ellers Association Associates Incorporated to provide a long-term financial management plan to the city of Kirkston.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution? Motion by Don, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kristi. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is, as previously discussed, uh, to engage Ellers to formulate a comprehensive financial plan, including a capital improvement plan. Uh, the contract is a not to exceed, not to exceed a total of twenty-five thousand dollars. I believe that in the past, that is an extremely fair price, considering what I've seen in the past, and staff recommendation is to move forward with the agreement.
All right, thank you. Further discussion?
I, I just think we need to engage them as soon as possible. I think we need to start having a conversation about really reevaluating how we can go forward with our budget and looking at bonding and looking at other funding sources, and do we need temporary bonding in order to try to find those funding sources? But I think at the end of the day, the council's directives have always been the three, right? Child care, housing, and jobs. And so we really need to focus on that, and I think the sooner we can get Ellers on board, the better.
Further discussion? There are none. Can I roll call, please?
Jerdy?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Cavalier?
Aye.
Alt?
Aye.
Clot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Uh, this is brings us to council report. Start with Tim. Got you off guard.
I, I really want to thank everyone that joined us this evening and are participating in this collaboration to come to some solutions with regards to our fiscal situation. Um, I think I've spoken to many of you personally. I, I come speaking to everybody today. It's been the maker, the butcher, the candlestick maker, everybody that I encounter in my, uh, in my private life have expressed their concerns, but also expressed their support of this esteemed group of, of, uh, of community members who are really focused on doing the best work that we can to be fiscally prudent and maintain, um, uh, a quality of excellence for the amenities that we provide our, our community. So know that this council takes this very, very seriously, and we're going to be, we're going to be lifting up all the, the rocks, as was mentioned earlier, to, to find ways to, uh, come to solutions for, for these issues. Thank you. Thank you for, uh, for coming tonight, and for those that are in our listening audience as well.
Thank you, Tim. Deline?
Oh, same as what Tim said, but appreciate everybody coming, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Wendy?
I'll agree. Thanks for coming and sharing your, your thoughts and feelings and, um, and opinions with us.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, thank you all for coming tonight, and it's good for, to see that the members of our community have a caring attitude toward the council and also for our city. We need to go, we need to go forward on this, on this whole business, so thank you for coming. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Clayton?
Same thing. I appreciate, uh, seeing the large group in the, uh, room here. Uh, I received several emails, phone calls. I appreciate the call, when you call me, or you just call, so I can better serve our community. That's all I have.
Thanks. Henry?
Uh, nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Kristi?
Um, I did not make it to the Kirkston Visitors Bureau meeting this last week because it came out the night before, and I had a meeting regarding our audit the next day at that time, so, um, it looks like they went through and approved their August, September, and October, um, finances, and so I will have to follow up on, um, what transpired, I guess, there. Um, you know, I, I feel that I've gotten a lot of phone calls similar to everybody else about, um, this, and, and I appreciate the outpouring of concern and things like that, but I've also appreciated those who called with possible other options or opportunities. You know, I don't think the city is not trying to find options and opportunities. I think that it's just a really hard, um, find when we're looking for other things. I, I'm really hopeful in some of the conversations that I've had recently with some individuals, um, about some alternatives, um, as well as I'm really looking forward to really digging in with Ellers and seeing what are the other options that we have that can support our city in becoming, um, the thriving place that we all want it to be. So, um, I'm curious to see how the next couple of weeks find out, so I appreciate everybody's input and sharing.
Thank you. Also want to thank everybody that attended tonight. I also received phone calls, emails, had a few conversations with a few people. Um, thank you to what everybody said here. And then finally, I want to thank Ashley and Holly regarding Election Day. We can't do without them, and also their staff. They put a lot of work into it, and I thank you.
Yes.
Um, yes. Yes.
I would like to add to my comment to the person who has given us all these information. He's done a great job, as he's been here for a short period of time. Jeff, I really appreciate what you're doing right now, so thank you very much for all the information you've given us. I think this is one of the best, uh, I think we are pretty well able to, actually, since six years I've been here, so thank you, Jeff, for all that work you're doing.
I'm wait, thank you, sir. I'm, I am awaiting the fire hose to be turned down just a little bit as I'm drinking.
All right, thank you. Uh, just a reminder, we do have a ways and means tonight, uh, regarding the budget, so nothing else become before council. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
only a few and input from the community. I have only a few guidance questions moving forward. I have provided the council with the draft budgets of all of our line items. I would have, be happy to answer any questions that the council may have. Outside of that, it is my intention, what you have that was emailed is a draft without the pool operations. However, I feel it is only prudent that I provide a draft with and without at our next meeting, so I will present that to the council for full deliberation. However, what right now, the drafts that we have are showing at minimum operating only with only critical capital expenses, necessary, uh, capital expenses. I'm looking at a deficit of the ball, in the ballpark, uh, let me look at my numbers, one eighteen, about eight hundred and forty thousand in a deficit, and I would ask council, I have identified a few items, locations where we can source funding. It will not cover the full, again, that amount is without the pool in operation. Um, I can't-
Is that at a fifteen percent levy or at the twenty-six percent?
That is at a fifteen percent levy, and that's the guidance that I would, that I'm about to ask, is I can supplement without tapping into any reserve principal amounts. I've spoken with Ellers, and our investments are anticipated in twenty twenty-five to accumulate approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest. We can, there, the two uses that we can have for that is we can allow it to accrue, to assist in some level, although not fully, obviously, in replenishing some of our reserves, or we can use that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to supplement our operating. I would not recommend taking any principal out of our investments, although there is no legal reason why we cannot, as was discussed at the previ, at the council meeting during the presentation, we do need to at least formulate some methodology of replenishing our reserves. Yes, sir.
Um, Jeff, i- is it possible to consider, uh, reassigning some enterprise funds?
Sir, you are reading my mind, the very next item that I have, is I've discussed with Brandon, the possibility of assigning approximately two hundred thousand dollars out of the water fund that we can reassign to the general fund with the significant infrastructure needs that we have. with the significant infrastructure needs that we have coming up. That is a level that I would, that I, Lance, and all have discussed that we would be comfortable with without impacting our future needs. We want to have a, our water department does have reserves. However, those reserves are going to come into play when we bond for infrastructure and we don't want to impact that bond rating. If we have any strength at all, it is in our water department and we don't want to weaken it. However, we feel we confident that we can pull approximately $200,000 from that fund to supplement. Those two in combination would provide us about 450,000 of the 750 to 950, depending on the decision of the council with our facilities. That would provide at work, at full, full cost capacity would provide us about half of the funding that we need. We still do not have the numbers from the state, from League of Minnesota Cities for our workers comp rating. I'm anticipating getting about $30,000 to $50,000 in a reduction of what we have in the budget. That is the full manual premium and based on our experience factor, I'm expecting about a 15% reduction in that. So I'm hoping to get between $30,000 and $50,000 off of that.
Can I just also, I'm hoping that as now engaging elders, that you're talking with them about our bond rating because that was another big part of what they were supposed to be assisting us with and like really getting a deep understanding of like what that actually means. I don't expect you to have all the knowledge and you have probably a very cursory knowledge of it. I want to make sure we're asking professionals what other things we can do and if that really does affect the bond rating as significantly as it could because I want to make sure that we're making the right decision based on that. And also, I want to talk about too, about us bonding the whole thing with the the Red River shows versus just that portion and seeing if that's something we can do and looking for other funding sources, even if it's like a short-term bond or something. So I would like to have that as part of the conversation as we're like, have this deficit. So that might not be something that we have to consider as this portion. So if we could have that conversation with elders too.
I can and I have already furnished them with our most recent audit so that they can begin the research on how that may impact our ratings along with our fund balances. And they have already been provided that information. I do have the original implementation of the Red River Valleys project with a $760,000 bond. I have run numbers to that. And at the, over 26 years on a $760,000 bond estimated at 4% with the anticipated TIF revenue at 100% capture rate, which is not a recommended capture rate. That takes all of the additional value and puts to the TIF district, which would then put it towards, we would use towards a bond payment.
Sure. Yeah, I would just like to see what other alternatives they might have to ask, so.
Todd is, at elders is working on a bond for the full amount. He's running the numbers on that. Carrie, is Carrie still? Have we, have we seen the numbers on the full from Todd yet?
Yes, come up here, Carrie, please.
It's very behind you, Keenan's running it up.
Yeah, he is working on that. He's also working on, you know, like a bunch of things. Even looking at if we could pay some of our expenditures back with getting a bond and recouping some of our road expenses that we paid. Because you've been talking to him probably almost as much as I have looking on these. Because I got the same audit report in September as you got where we went as a council, we've all been operating in good faith, moving on these projects. And so now we're all operating in good faith, looking for other resources and monies to be found out there. And we have found some, but as you alluded to, if we give up, if we say no thank you on some of these, then those departments will not be looking at us for a long time. So we're really in a delicate dance here. And so apologies to the community. I do want to clarify real quick that the Railroad Spur is not a city grant. The MRSI, the Railroad Spur grant is to Minnesota Northern. We are working on a grant that will put infrastructure in the industrial park and it will go up to that. The Railroad Spur grant itself is actually through MINDOT, goes to Minnesota Northern and we've been a supporter of them. But the only expenditure the city has made regarding that project is we donated 10 acres to, for them to put the spur on. It's the only money that we've expended on anything. All of the other grants that we've worked on as a council have been 100% matched by state and federal or different types of things. So as we look at developing, we've not done any of these type of things before. And that's a big deal too, Jeff. You know, you came in and took, had to catch up on two years of work that we've been doing out in the industrial park, two years of work that we've been doing out on the Red River Valley where there are shows. There's so many moving parts behind that. I'm hearing people on the, but there's private things you can't talk about because it's people's lives and it's businesses and it's finance. But slowly, at least I can tell you who's in charge of these things and kind of what's happening with it.
Carrie, excuse me, do you want to say what your title is?
Well, I'm sorry. Thank you, Clayton. I'm Carrie Kershaw. I'm the Community Development Director. I've been here for two years. I have been through a couple administrators. Jeff is my second. I've been through five financial directors. We've been through, you know, some things here, but I want to tell you one thing. We've got really good people and we're headed in the right direction and I feel really encouraged. And I really appreciate working with our council. And I think they're doing a great job and they're hanging in there, doing their best. And everybody, everybody did the best they could over the last X amount of years or did what they thought was the best. So hopefully, we'll keep moving. And if you guys keep showing up at meetings, you'll help us stay out of jail in between the lines. So I know we don't always agree, but I hope we always know. You know how much this council appreciates you and so do I on your feedback.
And Carrie, can I just also expand on the Railroad Spur? Because I think we need to understand like what the impact of that really is.
Yeah.
You have to understand a lot of farmers right now at this point are having to drive all the way down to St. Paul to get onto the spur, which then actually gets out to Duluth, which then now gets out to the European markets, right? So by us having this, we're actually providing more opportunity for farmers in this area to reach larger audiences with their product, as well as helping us develop that agricultural space. So I think that when we say the Railroad Spur, it's not that we're just trying to provide another space that some trains can come through, right? We're actually being very intentional about providing our local businesses like North Star Lime and things like that, people to move out their product as well. So I just want you guys to understand that like this is a larger piece and it's not just us trying to get a place for railroads. It's us actually developing out our agricultural areas. So I want you guys to understand a little bit more about, it's not just that. There is some where we're thinking, when we talk about Jeff mentioning strategic, there is strategic plans, what we're doing. Is there a larger picture? No, there isn't. And that's what we're really hoping with elders to bring us forth to. But there are strategic things that we're doing for reasons to help our larger tax base, which allows us to afford those amenities that we're looking at, right? To make Kirkston a thriving place. So just keep that in mind when these projects don't seem significant in the long run, they are. And so we're just asking you to consider that as well.
And the other thing on the Railroad Spur, there'll be, the first, the first half of the spur was granted. So we'll get the first leg of that in and then they'll start to, and I say we because I am part of the grant writing team, right? There'll be another grant that will be written to extend it down, head it a little bit more towards the south. And then we'll have a public yard there where people can have access. And it'll be run by a different person. It has nothing to do with the city at all. But we will be working to put other businesses out there because we need to increase our tax base out there. So any other questions on that? Did I answer that okay, Jeff?
Yeah, I apologize. I've got, I can't seem to drink enough to clear the throat.
Need to drink Coke? I have a question on the Railroad Spur. How many farmers are actually interested in using that?
We actually got some really good letters of interest that I'd have to go back through my whole application. But some of the farmers are more out of the region because they need a place to drop theirs. I know a lot of our local farmers already have their connections, but there's the value added and trying to, they're, the value added type thing. They don't have the connections like to jump a railroad spur like what we have. Like we mentioned, some of our mutual friends have already had a place to dump. But this will be more to open up for the region. Yeah, like I've got one person in particular that exports quite a bit of soybeans. And they will be able to come up here instead of having to haul a trailer up from there, up from cities, fill it up here or bring it back. They can actually, you know, shorten that by.
And then they will rent as well, then?
Well, they might rent or they might build, right, their own facility. Everybody's just going to have to make their own way, what they'd like to do on that. But so that's what we're working on. So the other thing that we're investing is, you know, we have a marketing branch. Excuse me. And I met with Keenan today and we met with one of the vendors that we're looking at and they specifically market industrial properties. And they go to, they have quite an, they have an extensive list of clients and networks. So we're not just trying to put something in and hope that magic appears. You know, we're trying to market it and do the whole thing and to get tax base into the community, so.
So then will the city?
Getting the wind-up sign from headquarters.
Point of order. We, the question had to do with whether or not we were moving forward and getting information on a larger bond and I believe we're starting to go down a separate rabbit hole.
So well, we do think that it would be realistic by the next council meeting to have elders here to help provide some of the other options and opportunities. Jeff?
I can reach out to elders to get that information.
I mean, I think we're kind of on a tight timeline right here if we're going to try to certify our budgets and get everything taken care of.
Just, and just for the council's information on the Red River project, the, the bond payments on a $760,000 bond vary depending on the year between $54,000 and $58,000 a year. The TIF revenue, which would come in on that project as it currently stands at a 100% capture rate in year three, which they usually run a couple of years behind because of the tax seasons. We would anticipate 30, $39,900 in year one or in year three, the first year that we would anticipate a significant payment, rising to year 26 of $68,000. The, at a $760,000 bond for that process, the tax levy would be subsidizing that bond until year 18. In year 19, the tax, the TIF district would cover the cost of the bond payments at a 100% capture. At a 70% capture, the bond would never accumulate the full payment. We would then, for the final six years, we would get payments with no bond payment. The net result of a 70% capture is the city would be $167,000 negative at the end of 26 years compared to the bond payments with the TIF revenue. Now, that does not take into account that we do have three other parcels that we can develop. However, we do not have projects lined for those at this time economically. The EDA is going to be looking at prioritizing development should we, with that project, to be able to move forward and become more profitable or a better process, better project for the city.
That's part of the marketing, Carrie, that you're doing, correct?
Let the record say she thumbs up.
Yeah, I would just like to see what other alternatives or if there's anything else creative that elders can do with us as far as that's concerned. You know, even if it's like a temporary bond or something until we can develop those other properties to kind of help with the profitability of that, I would think that would make sense, right? So it would be really nice to have those conversations as well.
So, so the other, the other question we have, our interest, we have the revenue from the water. Currently, the numbers, let me make sure. The numbers that I have with the council, the levy is 4.174 million. We do have space within the tax capacity or not the tax capacity, but our preliminary levy to move up from that. Our, does the council wish me to draft a potential budget at the full proposed levy? Or do we wish to stay as we are listed currently at 4.173 or 4.174 or roughly an 18 and a half percent levy increase over previous year?
What was the, what was the max again? Was it 26, 23?
Just over 4.5, ma'am.
But percentage-wise, is what I'm asking.
26.5%.
Thank you. Okay. I, I think that it might, would be interesting to see what that looks like. Just to be able to see the difference in comparison between the two to give us a better idea. I don't know. Thoughts, feelings?
Well, I'd like to see a mid-range too. So a top, a middle, and a bottom.
Well, currently.
And by bottom, you mean where it's currently sitting at 15?
Where it's currently sitting.
Yeah.
It would be nice to know too, out of each level, see what the impact on each homeowner is.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. Yeah.
Would the council, would it be acceptable, the council impact on a, on 200,000 and one estimated 200 and one at 300,000?
Are those pretty common? I thought it was like 150 last time. No? Or the past comparisons? I mean, I guess you would probably want to look at what an average value is first and then like maybe utilize that as a median range.
I can provide all three, ma'am. So I will pursue looking at the interest, water. Provide two copies, both with and without amenity. The impact on the homeowner, 200, 300 and average value. A full preliminary, a midpoint, and at the current level, proposed level of 4.17. I will work with the department heads and have that ready for the next meeting. As I said, the key for this evening is I was looking, I would ask for the guidance. I believe I have that to be able to move forward.
Then we'll adopt final budget.
Into December, right?
December or December something.
Is December. I need my, I need my left hand here.
Yeah, I think it's into December is generally when you have to certify by, I can't find out right now. Yeah, but like we actually have to adopt it with the state, like if it's entered into the state.
So is that going to be a special meeting or is that just the December 23rd meeting?
I would, I would like to move that as the November 23rd meeting. This is a short weekend and would, and as such, tomorrow would be the deadline for us to be able to present, assemble a packet. And that gives extremely limited time for staff and I to work presenting these items.
Well, we can always squeeze in a special meeting too between if need to be, so. Kind of keep that on the radar if need to. Anything else, Jeff?
No, sir. I believe I have the direction to move forward.
Anything else regarding the budget discussion? Anything else regarding the budget discussion?
The only thing that I would ask is if there are any questions from the council on the sheets that were presented.
I I do have a question, Jeff.
Yes, sir.
So you itemized three prior questions. One had to do with 1.35 million dollars in like construction costs, road construction costs.
It was the three questions that I'd asked about the audit last meeting. That's what those were answers to.
I, but I didn't understand the context of that, that I think it was page 66 or.
That would be a Lance question.
It was regarding why we didn't charge any monies towards the road construction, though there was road construction, right?
On page 66 of the audit report, there was a question asked about a budget to the actual expenditures comparison. And this was in the improvement fund, I believe. There was 1.3 million dollars roughly that was budgeted for 2020, 2023. And there were no related expenditures that were recorded to that fund. My understanding is there, the the expenditures actually rolled through this street construction fund. And that's where those were captured. And so I think there was just the budget line item was put into the incorrect fund for that.
Thank you, Lance. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That's the only question I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Lance. Yes, again, I would, I would thank the council for their patience. As mentioned before, we are, we began this process much later than is normal. And I will move forward with staff this week to prepare documents and get them for out for y'all's review.
Okay, we good?
Sounds good, yes, sir.
We are adjourned. Thank you.